You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the January 23rd, 2024 meeting of the La Porte County Plan Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Welcome, everybody. I would like to call our regular Plan Commission meeting to order for Tuesday, January 23rd at 6:00 PM. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance and then roll call Agenda Approval and Elections. Please rise for the pledge. Mr. Veatch, would you lead us, please?
Pledge, lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Ashley, roll call, please.
Tony Hendricks.
Here.
John Watson.
Here.
Joe Haney.
Present.
John Carr.
Here.
Rita Beatty.
Here.
Deb Vance.
Here.
Earl Cunningham.
Present.
Harold Parker.
On Zoom.
Okay, can I get approval of our agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, agenda passes. Moving on to the elections. We're going, we're going to select a presiding officer and then I'm going to turn over the gavel and they can finish the rest of the elections. That's how we'll, we'll do this. So we'll open the floor for nominations for President.
I would like to nominate Tony Hendricks for President.
Is there a second to that nomination?
I'll second it.
We have a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations for President?
I'd like to nominate John Carr for President.
Is there a second for that nomination?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, Ms. Ashley, will you call the roll and each member can state who they are voting for as President? And when that is concluded, I'll turn over the gavel.
Rita Beatty.
Tony.
Harold Parker.
Tony.
Earl Cunningham.
Carr.
John Watson.
Carr.
Deb Vance.
Tony.
Joe Haney.
John Carr.
John Carr.
John Carr.
It is a split four-four vote.
Okay, so we do not have a President. Call the roll again. We need to have a presiding officer. We'll give someone a chance to change their vote.
Rita Beatty.
Tony Hendricks.
Harold Parker.
Tony.
Earl Cunningham.
Carr.
John Watson.
Carr.
Deb Vance.
Tony.
Joe Haney.
John Carr.
John Carr.
Carr.
It's the same.
Okay.
Is there, was it, who was the fourth?
For, it was four-four.
It was four, okay.
It's four-four.
One more time.
Oh, yeah.
One more time. We need to select a President. We'll give the members a chance to change their vote. If we are at a stalemate again for a third time, then we move forward, at least for another month, with the, the officers held over from last. I believe so. Okay, one more time, call the roll.
Rita Beatty.
Tony Hendricks.
Harold Parker.
Tony.
Earl Cunningham.
Carr.
John Watson.
Carr.
Deb Vance.
Tony.
Joe Haney.
Carr.
John Carr.
Carr.
You're going to proceed with last year's President.
Okay, so we, we can address that later and with that, with the failure to appoint a new President, I'm going to turn it over to last year's President so we can conduct some business this evening. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Mike. We need to hold elections for the Secretary of the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission Board of Zoning Appeals member and the Plan Commission Legal Counsel. Are there nominations from the board for, I guess we'll do the Plan Commission, Secretary of the Plan Commission?
I nominate Mike Cohen.
Second.
There's a motion to second. Are there any other nominations for Secretary of the Plan Commission? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Tony Hendricks.
Aye.
Rita Beatty.
Aye.
Harold Parker.
Aye.
Earl Cunningham.
Aye.
John Watson.
Aye.
Deb Vance.
Aye.
Joe Haney.
Aye.
John Carr.
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any nominations from the board for the Legal Counsel for the Plan Commission 2024?
I nominate Doug Beege, please.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion to second. Are there any nominations for Legal Counsel for the Plan Commission 2024?
I would nominate Guy DiMartino.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion to second. Any other nominations for Legal Counsel for the Plan Commission 2024? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Rita Beatty.
Doug Beege.
Harold Parker.
Beege.
Earl Cunningham.
DiMartino.
John Watson.
Martino.
Deb Vance.
Doug Beege.
Joe Haney.
DiMartino.
John Carr.
Steve Martino.
Tony Hendricks.
Doug Beege.
It is a four-four.
Are there any other nominations from the board other than the two presented? Hearing none, I guess we'll call the roll again and see if anyone would like to change their minds since we need five votes. Call the roll, please.
Rita Beatty.
Doug Beege.
Harold Parker.
Beege.
Earl Cunningham.
Dee Martino.
John Watson.
Martino.
Deb Vance.
Doug Beege.
Joe Haney.
Dee Martino.
Tony Hendricks.
Doug Beege.
It's the same, four-four.
Can we make another nomination?
Yes, the board is open for making no more nominations.
I make a nomination for Joe Svetinoff.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. There are three nominations on the board. Please call the roll for either Doug Beege, Guy DiMartino, or Joe Svetinoff.
Rita Beatty.
Doug Beege.
Harold Parker.
Beege.
Earl Cunningham.
Dee Martino.
John Watson.
Martino.
Deb Vance.
Doug Beege.
Joe Haney.
Dee Martino.
Tony Hendricks.
Doug Beege.
Dee Martino.
So none for Svetinoff?
With that, I guess we will proceed, I guess, for this month as Doug Beege is our Legal Counsel. Is the board, the Plan Commission has a seat on the Board of Zoning Appeals and presently Deb Vance is on the Board of Zoning Appeals. So is that our nomination for our, we need a motion to make Deb Vance our person, our representative from the Plan Commission to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I nominate John Carr as our representative to the Plan Commission or to the BGA. I think she already has a seat. She's been appointed by the Commissioners to both boards.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes, correct, second.
Is there any motions? All those in favor of John Carr for being the Plan Commission's BGA appointee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both of you?
Aye.
One nay? Yes. That's all the elected officers we need?
We need to select a Vice President.
Oh, sorry. Is there a motion for the Vice Chairman and Vice President of the Plan Commission for 2024?
Nominate Deb Vance.
Nomination Deb Vance, there a second?
She, she, I don't know. That's your sugar, yeah, no.
I would like to decline that.
All right.
Nominate Joe Haney.
I'll second.
Nomination for Joe Haney is a second? Any other nominees?
I nominate Rita Beatty.
Nomination Rita Beatty Kelly, is there a second?
This would be four and four.
I'll second that motion. Any other nominations for Chair and Vice President of the Plan Commission? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Rita Beatty.
Rita.
Harold Parker.
Rita.
Earl Cunningham.
Haney.
Deb Vance.
Rita.
Joe Haney.
Haney.
John Carr.
Haney.
John Watson.
Haney.
Tony Hendricks.
Rita Beatty.
It's a four-four.
They don't like to change their motion, their vote? Are any of their nominations from the board for Vice Chairman of the Plan Commission? This person does run the meetings. Hearing none, call the roll one more time, please.
Rita Beatty.
Rita.
Harold Parker.
Rita.
Earl Cunningham.
Joe Haney.
John Watson.
Haney.
Deb Vance.
Rita.
Joe Haney.
Haney.
John Carr.
Haney.
Tony Hendricks.
Rita.
It's the same.
We have a four-four tie for the month. I guess we will continue on with Rita Beatty as Vice Chair.
Ms. President, I have a question. Since, who was the, who was appointed to take Glenn Minnick's spot? John?
John Watson, I believe.
Oh, okay. Okay, so are we going to continue forward with two members of the Plan Commission on the BGA?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Was it John Watson, not John Carr?
No, John Watson would have taken the place of Nick Minnick as a BGA member, but John Carr is now our BGA appointee from the Plan Commission.
So as far as, from what I understand, the appointment is made every year, is that correct?
A member from the Plan Commission to the BGA? Okay, so it technically wasn't Glenn Minnick's appointment? Yeah, he was appointed last year by.
Right, last year, but it made it sound like it was.
Yeah, yeah, we switch it to somebody since we have Glenn Minnick on the board. I would ask, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Could you please ask Little Conservation to appoint their member?
Yes, sir.
And maybe Harold Parker could help us a little?
Yeah, they don't have a man over there either, a woman, so I don't know what they're planning.
We need.
I contacted Purdue and told them to get busy and get it done, but it seems no sauce in the pudding down there. They're not enjoying it.
I'll reach out too, because this board is made up by nine members with a five-member vote only holding and we need that person here.
We need a tiebreaker.
We need a tiebreaker by.
The conditions surrounding that appointment are pretty strict.
Yes.
Which is why that seat has been vacant for so long, but the sooner we fill that seat, the less we'll be deadlocked here on both.
No, it has to be Purdue Extension Director and they have to live in the county, right? Or it could be Purdue Extension Board Member, but they have to live in the county, right? Only two ways.
It has to be the, the.
Yeah.
To be able to.
Yes. And then for the, for the record, this is the first meeting of the year. As County Surveyor, I have the ability to appoint a designee as an alternate in case I have a conflict, so I'm again pointing Jeff Wright as my alternate, as my designee for the 2024 calendar year in case I have a conflict and that moves the agenda on to petition one, which I have a conflict as a firm I work for, represents.
Can you give the minutes? Approve the minutes.
Oh, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented from the past January meeting or November meeting 2023?
So moved. I have a question on that. As far as the minutes, Tony, you were not in attendance and it doesn't say that you were excusing yourself for a conflict, so I didn't know what the circumstance was for the previous.
Yeah, revise the minutes to show that I had a conflict interest and I had to appoint my alternate for that meeting, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
And who the alternate was, please?
Yes.
In the previous meeting, I think, was the same way.
Yes. But those changes, are there any other additions, changes, corrections, deletions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Thank you. Rita, it's your meeting, thank you.
Thank you. I can't do it from here. Okay. Thank you all for your patience during that time. We'll go ahead and get started with petition on the agenda for this evening. The petitioner, DNM Escavating, represented by Council Andrew Volz of House and House, respectfully petitions the Plan Commission for a 39 lot with one outlet major subdivision called Sable Estates, located immediately south of 3786 North 400 West La Porte, Indiana, center township parcel 460617200002000042, and the exhibits were attached for all of us. Council, would you like to go ahead and kind of brief us a little bit on what our protocol is for this evening, please?
Yeah, okay, so we, this, this petition was tabled in October 24 meeting and then it remained on the table in the November 28 meeting, so then the question is, what do we do next? And we generally follow the Roberts Rules of Order as, you know, in the commission we have for years. I'm not sure they were ever completely formally adopted, but we need direction from somewhere. And so under Roberts Rules of Order, if it passes two meetings, then the table is considered moot. Not the petition, but putting it on the table. So it automatically comes back up for action by the Plan Commission, okay? And that can be whatever action you take, like I instructed before, you can either approve the petition, deny the petition, the Plan Commission chose to table it and that motion is still available. Does everybody understand? It's a little hard, Roberts Rules of Order is very difficult to read, so it gets a little confusing. So essentially, it's back up automatically and the commission can do whatever it wants.
Okay, so at this point, do we have Andrew go ahead and?
No, I think everything was closed.
Okay.
Both petitioner and remonstrators, when it went, procedurally, when it went to the commission for a vote, all that evidence is now closed.
Okay.
Okay, so essentially you would entertain a motion from the commission.
All right, so that, with that being said, someone would like to entertain a motion for this evening's petitioner for the DNM Escavating.
I'm not sure what the motion would be.
The motion would be to go ahead and move forward with the petition that was represented here when Mr. Volz and from House and House put the petition in front of us, so we're voting to whether to move forward with that petition. Or deny the petition.
Or table. There's three options.
Do you want me to read off the?
Or we could table it again. Or we could table it again, correct?
That's a best possibility. But just to be clear, I'll.
Yes, thank you.
Three things. I'll read the three decisions you can make outside the table under the zoning code. One, approve the application upon a determination that the application complies with this ordinance. Number two, approve the application subject to certain modifications that would bring the application into compliance. Or three, deny the application on the grounds that the application does not comply with the ordinance. Those are the three choices you have and then, of course, any procedural motions are still available. But on the ultimate question, that's what the zoning code says.
Okay, and with a new member on the board this evening, I guess I'm sure he's probably got a few concerns and questions because of everything that's in front of us. But to be able to check those boxes, can you guide us as to whether this petition actually met all the criteria that we were actually looking for?
Well, that, 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 that's the Plan Commission's ultimate decision, but I can tell you, as a normal course, the building commissioners, each department head heads go through Plat Committee and in Plat Committee, the goal is to make everything compliant with the department head's requirements, which are a little more strict than the zoning code before it gets to the Plan Commission. So every department heads has signed off on this, you know, from drainage, health and safety, sewers, the whole nine yards. Okay, so that, that's already been done. That after the Plan Commission makes this decision, then it goes to secondary and that's when they get more specific in design, plans, road bonds, that type of thing.
Mr. Beege, are you aware that one of the seated members right now was involved in a Plat meeting? Has a signature on some paperwork from that Plat meeting and is in the minutes?
No, I'm not aware.
It would seem to me that that's as big a conflict as Mr. Hendricks in some respects.
Well, the question, what, in what role did he serve in Plat Committee?
Well, I would encourage you to read the minutes.
Exactly.
Because it was, it's pretty disturbing to be a member of the Plan Commission and read the minutes that I saw from the Plat Committee.
Well, which, which month and what did they say?
It was probably November, I would say, October, November. I can't quote it because I'm not 100% sure, but with technology, I'm sure that one of these two probably have it readily accessible.
The question, who was he representing in the Plat Committee meeting? I can step in and answer some of that. I'm going to assume that you're referring to Jeff Wright, who is the alternate sitting up there today and was present at Plat Committee representing MS4. I required the petitioner to attend two Plat Committee Technical Review Sessions prior to allowing their petition to proceed forward here based on questions, deficiencies and completions and whatnot, and Jeff Wright was actually part of that. So I believe that is what Mr. Carr is referring to. Okay, so if I can clarify, the county hired Mr. Wright to look over the MS4 requirements? That's correct, yes. Right, and then I don't think there is a conflict of interest because he would not be representing DNM. He'd be like every other department head there and I think part of that's the function, MS4 is it could probably have been put together yet, right? Or at the time? It was in a transition. It's blood, yeah, so I don't think there's a conflict because he was not representing DNM.
Like Mr. Carr, I would express publicly that I have some serious concerns about statements that were made and direct quotes in the minutes, let me, again, I don't have the minutes with me, but I just think that it will, sooner or later, it's going to come out, somebody's going to bring it up.
Okay, thank you. If it's there, would any of the members like to make a motion regarding the petitioner's petition that's in front of us this evening? We have the three options that our council has advised us that we are.
I'd like to make the motion to table this until we can discuss it further. Maybe untangle some of the web.
Is there a second to that motion?
Is there a timeframe on that motion?
No. If I may, you, the way I'm reading the rules, and you can, of course, vote to suspend the rules, I suppose, if you wanted to, but the way the rules will work, it would automatically come up in three months. And I'm not, and I don't see anywhere in the rules where you can or cannot set a time period under which you table.
Okay, well, I just stumbled across some minutes and I don't know who Paul Vicari is, maybe you can clear that up for me. But he stated that Jeff Wright gave him a cookbook and how to get it passed in review. It is pretty simple. These are public minutes.
If I may.
Then he, then he went on to say how fun it was. So I, I just think that it stinks and I'm not going to have any part of it.
Wait a minute, what, what stinks?
The stink?
You understand the process that you go through for Plat Committee, because it's always, always, but an interactive process between the governmental officials and the developer to make sure everything's brought into compliance. So what stinks about that? Because every department does it in the, in the Plat Committee meeting.
Okay.
I, I can jump in and add to, and they teach us this in training. When you are a, a technical person and in a compliance capacity, your job is to assist the applicant, petitioner or non-compliant party, assist them with achieving compliance. So that, that is what is, is taught in training and that is the directive of.
I have no problem with you working with contractors, developers to assist them. I think that's absolutely what you should do. But as far as like making a recipe for a cookbook and how to get things passed, I just think that that shouldn't be in public meeting minutes. It just makes the public mistrust our officials in a public meeting.
Is it my turn? Can I speak?
Yes, if you'd like to.
The MS4 program is 100% a cookbook. There is nothing about the MS4 program that is not a cookbook. There's a list of 60 items that we go through and we review those in detail and we check the box. They either comply or they don't. I can't think of any other program in the county that's more cookbook than checking a set of MS4 plans. We go through there, we checked up. I had the opportunity to go through the plans in detail as a licensed professional engineer. That's what I was asked to do. I hold multiple degrees and I hold multiple licenses in multiple states and I don't think the process stinks. I think the process is working. I think there's a checklist that went, that I went through personally. I wrote the letter of approval of the plans for MS4. That's what the county hired me to do. I went through the plans even beyond that in terms of every aspect of every part of every engineer. You do not want a guy like me going through your plans. I went through the plans in detail and there is nothing engineering wrong with the plans that I could find. I can't say any planner than that, but we went through the grading plans. The grading is spectacular. We went through the drainage plans. I combed through every drop of water through the plant. There is nothing wrong with that plan. I would. Go ahead. I need to finish. I went through the traffic plans. I went through the plans and profiles for the streets, site distances, stopping site distances, vertical site distance, pick a site distance. I went through it. They said, there's a lot of eyes on this project. We want to make sure it's right. I made sure it's right. Now, there's a whole lot of other things going on beyond just the four corners of the plans. I don't have access to that information. The only thing I know is I have a set of plans before me. I went through those plans, brought what I would call the A-game to the plans because that's what I was asked to do and those plans are spectacular from an engineering point of view. Now, as I look around the room, I don't know everybody here, but I may be the only engineer licensed professional to be able to do that to that level of detail. Now, as far as a conflict goes, Councilman Cunningham is my friend and I have the utmost respect for Earl and you're not going to find me taking any shots at Earl. Most of the time when I watch Earl, I sit in the audience and I listen to what Earl has to say because he knows the game. He knows the ropes. Earl's not always right. Just not always right and I think in this point, you know, I just don't, I don't think he's right in this point and that, I'll leave it at that. I would just like to add that it was your decision to deny the plan previously or point out deficiencies, or you and Mr. Vicari together? So I went through the plans and I rejected the plans, I'm going to say at least no, no less than four times before. We went through and rounded stuff simply to the nearest 15 seconds of a degree simply because we wanted to make sure every point was covered. And so every point, engineering-wise, plat-wise and everything associated with the joint zoning ordinance is there. I think the dialogue and the questions.
I think the dialogue and the questions from the board members is good for transparency. This is a hot button case. It's a controversial case. It's been years ongoing. It's imperative that we get this right. And this kind of open discussion in this public forum, yes, it might be some tension, but I think overall it's good for the process. That's my comment.
Before we move on, could I ask our attorney a question?
Sure.
Is there anything that you should be telling us that you haven't told us yet tonight?
A lawsuit was filed.
Thank you.
By D and M to overturn the plan commission's decision to table this matter first week of December. So our response is due end of the week and we will be filing a response.
So was that going to be brought up or any members of the plan?
Yes, we haven't had a meeting since it was filed.
But we do have email and we do get communication.
I don't communicate with the, the, the plan commission members.
That's fine. You don't feel necessary to inform the plan commission members that there's a lawsuit been filed. I understand completely.
I do not.
To me, thank you.
I, can I talk now? You, you made your loaded statement. It's my turn. It would be inappropriate for me to communicate with plan commission members outside of a public meeting. So that's where I choose to communicate. We didn't have a meeting in December. There's no liability on the part of the county. They're simply trying to overturn the commission's decision to table this. So there's no intrigue, there's no mystery, no one's hiding anything. Doug, normal course of business.
Doug, you know, I don't know how long you've been the plan commission attorney, but I think things get stale after a while. And I think there's a common theme here with yourself, maybe Harold Parker, Rita, Tony Hendrix, they're pretty stale if you look at their history in the board.
How can you tell? You barely showed up last year.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. We're going to, we're going to call this at peace at the moment.
I don't know what to do.
Because John, there's definitely things that are being discussed out here in public that do not need to be. Our dirty laundry, this is no place for our dirty laundry. And I'm sorry that you guys are here to have to listen to this. John brought up something that he would like to have answered. It was answered. So we appreciate that, but at this point I would like to.
This, this is a political body, correct?
It is a political body. We're appointed by commissioners. There are people that are here that are on this commission that are appointed because of their positions with the county. They have to be here. There are people that are on here that are appointed by commissioners. And now there's some of us that have been around the bush a few times on the commission. And we appreciate, you know, the honesty that does go on here. And we do try to keep everything above board and discussion. And unfortunately, I'm sorry, this evening is one of the first evenings that I'm actually to say I'm ashamed of how things have been discussed here this evening.
As President, would you agree that any political body via parents of impropriety brings some contempt with the communities, our voters, our taxpayers?
I believe our taxpayers are sitting here for a reason and listening to us for a reason, whether they're on Zoom or whether they're sitting out here in the audience. I, for one, sat out there for years in the audience and that's how I actually got asked to be put on this board because of the fact that I was interested in what was going on with our county and I was happy with what I was seeing, but they asked me to join them and I was happy to oblige to that. So therefore, as far as things that come out that shouldn't be brought out here, maybe we need to keep them to ourselves, but there are things that Mr. Carr has brought up this evening that, like I said, I'm ashamed that our board would actually bring those things out. And Mr. Cunningham, I can understand where you're coming from, that you feel things need to be put out in public, but there are certain things that should not be put out in public. And if you have a problem with someone, maybe that should be taken up with that particular person.
Our attorney just said we communicate in a public format.
We do communicate in a public forum.
Okay.
My question, if, if he communicated, he said he wouldn't communicate with us, did he communicate it with Tony?
He communicated the things that we need to know.
We had a lawsuit filed in the first week of December. Did you know about it before 48 hours ago?
I did not know about it till just now when you guys brought it up because of the fact that we have not had a meeting and if it doesn't have anything to do with what we have this evening. If you guys remember, the last few meetings we had, there were things that were brought up that we had this total discussion. And I don't know if Mr. Carr, if you were, happened to be here or not, because as we discussed, you did miss a few meetings, but there was.
Did he miss any more meetings in the last two months than Mr. Hendrix?
We've only.
Three in a row?
Okay.
Tony had to recuse himself.
He doesn't have to recuse himself from the meeting. He recuses himself from the vote.
The petition.
Exactly. And but the problem with that is, here's the appearance from the community. By coming in and being here for the presidential election tonight and then leaving the meeting, he gets to let his appointee vote on something he couldn't vote on himself. That doesn't stink. This doesn't pass the diaper test.
He feels he, if with his presence here is what he told me, that he felt his presence here.
So you guys talk in between the meetings?
No, just before this evening. I asked if he was going to stay and he said his presence was not needed here this evening because it looks bad.
Because when he leaves, then he gets a vote indirectly. That's what it comes down to. His appointment gets the vote for him when he knows he couldn't vote himself.
And my question then is to our council, that is what the county surveyor can do for the plan commission if I'm not.
Yeah, the statute's clear. The county surveyor is not the only one that can do that.
I understand that. Let me ask you a question, Mr. Attorney. If we had six petitions on the agenda tonight, do you think it's fair to the other five people that the president walks out of a meeting because he has to abstain from one vote? Or should he be here running the meeting?
I'm here to give legal advice, not what should happen. Okay, let me put it this way. Legally, the alternate votes where he has a conflict of interest.
Exactly.
Okay.
And the alternate, the alternate votes based on what he has physically seen, physically reviewed and knows to be the accurate truth as far as engineering goes. That's it. Tony doesn't have anything to say about whether, how I look, I look at the plan, I look, I'm facts and data. Period.
Madam President, I have a, have a question for our attorney. Mr. Bee Gees, I, I, I understand what you said earlier. You don't communicate with the, the board as a whole outside of public meetings. Did you inform the plan commission president or vice president or who, who did you inform when the lawsuit came through?
Well, the, the building commissioners served with the lawsuit. And so when it comes to litigation, I, I work with the building commissioner. Okay. I, I don't remember whether or not I sent it to Tony or not. Okay. At the time, when a law suit first comes in, I always get an extension of time to answer. Okay, so I would knew I, we would have a meeting because the, technically there's not an answer due. It's kind of complicated statute, but I'm going to file a motion to dismiss. Okay, I'm not disclosing litigation strategy. It's going to be filed tomorrow or Friday when it's done. Our due date was Friday, so I knew we would have a plan commission meeting before any responsive pleading was due. Okay. And the lawsuit's a matter of public record or I can send it to any plan commission members. I think some members may be trying to make something out of nothing because the county gets sued, plan commission. We haven't had a, we get BZI challenges on occasion. This is the first plan commission challenge we've had since I've been doing the work and that's got to be near 20 years. So there's no intent to deceive or hide anything. That doesn't even make sense. The theory doesn't even make sense. We had a meeting tonight. I'm telling you folks, we're going to file a motion dismissed and I think I can get it knocked out. If anybody wants to see a copy of the complaint, I have it. There's no liability on the part of the county. They're simply trying to reverse the plan commission's decision. Okay, there's two components to their argument. One, that the plan commission tabling this indefinitely is the same thing as a final decision and the law is clear, you don't go to court until there's a final decision. So we're going to argue there's not. The second part of it was the county commissioners jaded the process in remonstrating when they're the ultimate decision makers and they're asking the court to appoint special, whatever you want to call them, special judges or, or special dispensation to take the decision out of the county commissioners' hands. Okay, now the first, the first part of it, we're going to handle whether or not they can even file anything. Okay, so I don't know if we'll get to the second part or not.
Sure. Yeah, I'm not trying to cast versions. I'm just trying to figure out how, how, how you handled this as it came in. That's all. So who, who specifically was named in this suit? Was it the plan commission and the building commissioner? How, do you recall?
I, I think it's just the plan commission. Normally it's just the plan commission.
All right.
Sometimes defendants will name, because I've done county defense work in the past. Sometimes they'll name the county commissioners, then individual department hence, because it's really irrelevant unless that department had went outside of their employment description or did something outside of their job duties. Okay, that's a different topic completely. So it doesn't matter too much on who was named. The plan commission was named and they're ultimately responsible for the defense of the case. Okay?
All right, just moving forward, it would be my recommendation that if the plan commission does get served with any suits that, you know, we, we don't have to discuss it outside of a, of a public meeting, but we, I, I believe we should all be notified.
That's not a problem. I've just done it, like the Board of Zoning Appeals, we've had, I don't know, maybe six appeals over the last 10 years or so, none of which have gone anywhere. You know, I've got them all shut down. So it's just no problem to send a, send a copy of the plan. It's all public records, so there's nothing to hide. But I prefer to say, I prefer to tell you folks in a public meeting so you can ask me questions and we can interact so we don't have this, everybody speaking amongst themselves and coming up with all these ludicrous theories that aren't even close to the truth.
Sure, yeah. And I'm just trying to find the path forward because as, as our attorney, you would be responding on our behalf. And of course you would want to get direction from us on, obviously we would defer to your legal, legal advice and direction usually, but we would at least as the client have to direct you to either dismiss or whatever because you work for us. So I don't, I don't know exactly how appropriate it is to be taking steps without informing us because then we don't have informed consent. We're not giving any consent to, to you to file anything from, because nobody, nobody had directed you to file anything. I mean, kind of like on the Board of Commissioners, you know, when, when something comes in, we look at it, we figure out where, usually figure out where, where it is to go. And unfortunately, there was an incident last year where not all the Board of Commissioners knew what was going on until after a judgment was rendered. So my concern is that right now, we're going to have a repeat of what happened last year where members of the plan, plan commission, like members of the Board of Commissioners are totally cut out and not even realizing there's a lawsuit going on.
Well, but yeah, that's not accurate, Mr. Haney. Not at all, not even close.
Yes, it is.
Because that issue I handled.
Yeah, you did.
And I followed the same procedure the county has handled for years as established when we, when we changed insurance carriers.
I wasn't even aware of it.
Well, if you're going to change the rules, you need to notify the people working for you and not after the fact. Okay. And here.
I even think you behind my back and done something when I didn't know.
And nobody went behind your back.
You did. Judge Alaviso stamped an order before I even knew any of it had happened.
The president of the commission approved it and signed it.
On her own.
Because you don't, because commissioners don't communicate. I had nothing to do with that. That's how we agreed to settle small claims to, to write a save on expenses. You don't know about the stop sign collisions and the mailboxes that the insurance carrier handles. It's the same thing.
We signed off on them though.
Okay.
We did, saw one today, $114.
I'm not going to do what you'd like to do in the commissioners' office, commissioners' office. And by the way, the county's wrongfully not paying me for that work that I did. The president approved it and that's the end of it. You're trying to change the rules after the fact, just like this. Whenever a complaint comes in against either BZI or the plan commission, I enter an appearance to protect the county until such time as we decide how to move forward. If you'd like me to wait on the motion to dismiss, I will until after we have an executive session.
I think under new business, we could probably authorize you to move forward with a motion to dismiss.
Okay. We've already, it's already come out, but we don't discuss litigation.
Usually no, but a motion.
In an open meeting. We normally set this for an executive session. So decide, decide which one you want, but I handle things as we have, as has worked very well for a long time. If you want to change the process, tell me and I'm more than willing to do it, but don't complain about it after the fact and intimate that I'm just off on my own. Okay, the county has to be protected.
Point of order.
The plan commission has.
Point of order. Rita, are you going to run the meeting or are you going to let the attorney run it? I thought we had a petition on the table, but I would just like to get home to have dinner and see my. I, I believe we have a big, interesting motion to table.
Yes, we have a motion on the table and we have a second. But I would like to address Mr. Carr that I really don't appreciate being demeaned. We went through this before with you demeaning my character and we're not going to do that again this evening. So I would appreciate, moving forward, we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any more discussion on the petition that is before us this evening? No further discussion? Could we take a roll call on the motion to table?
Rita Beatty?
Aye.
Joe Haney?
Aye.
Jeff Wright?
The motion to table is for how long?
He said three months.
Three, he said up to three months.
Technically the motion's indefinitely, but if we're going to follow Robert's Rules of Order, it's going to come back up in three months.
Okay, then I, I say aye.
John Watson?
Aye.
John Carr?
Aye.
Harold Parker?
Nay.
Earl Cunningham?
Aye.
Deb Vance?
Nay.
That is six to two tabled.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your time and we're on to old business. Any old business from anyone?
I have something to bring up. I'd just like to apologize for Rita for thinking that I demeaned her in the past and that we've talked about it. I don't recall that ever happening, but if I did, I just want to apologize for that.
Thank you, John. I do have some old business. I received a phone call this evening as I was pulling in and this gentleman had some information that he would like to bring. I believe it was Mr. Parker had talked to him about it. And he sent me a document that he's requesting some amendments to the solar ordinance. And it was suggested maybe that I try to read this text message from him, enlighten everyone this evening on it. Solar projects should have a minimum distance of a half mile from wetlands, river streams, tributaries to avoid immediate damage to water quality and possible contamination ecological disasters. Number two, solar fields should only be allowed to use woven, woven wire fence no taller than five foot to allow movement of wildlife. Number three, industrial scale of solar plants should not be placed on A1 agricultural and RA rural area use, should be rezoned to commercial or industrial. The landowners to be held liable for any clean or decommissioning involved with the solar program with no financial help from the county. Finally, allow the neighbors that live next to the said location of a solar project and community be heard. If all oppose it, that opposition should be expected. I will forward this to the council and Mike and Mitch so that way they can forward it to anybody else that's involved with the, looking at that solar panel ordinance also. So.
I could add that Harold Parker and I had a conversation and just to clarify, I do not communicate with the board about petitions, but when it comes to, you know, new ordinances and, and, and other business, that it's not a bias on petitions, that's different. So Harold had noticed something that was going on in another county and brought it up so that we can see how their solar is affecting them and get ahead of it here. And I think the gist of it was considering a limitation as to say a percentage of coverage on a field or whatnot. And, and I, I think that we should entertain discussions until, until we're absolutely happy and satisfied with our ordinance and that, and that we are sure that we have it covered in this county when we can see what is happening in other counties with it.
Exactly. Okay, thank you. All right, any other old business? Any new business?
I have an item under new business. So I don't know, probably six months ago, I stated that we really need to update our 20-year comprehensive policy plan that was last done in 2009. And I said I'd be searching for a grant. I guess the good news is I received funding and I have written RFQ and firms will be scored the 12th of February and the project and we should have a new comprehensive plan meeting, I'm hoping, by May of this year with the new firm. And that process usually takes about a year, 18 months, hopefully more like a year. But there are a lot of public meetings as I know Rita. But there are a lot of public meetings as I know Rita was on the board, I think at the time in 2009 when we conducted those. They were in Michigan City, the port, down southern communities in La Crosse. They were pretty much all over the place. So this is the 20,000-foot level policy plan of how we want to grow and develop in La Porte County. So it's real important. And it should be an exciting time. I remember the last one. It was a very exciting time and a lot of people got involved. A lot of the meetings, we had 100 people in the audience. And we probably had five or six different meetings. So it's a 20-year plan. It's supposed to be updated every 10 to 15 years. It was last adopted in 09, so it's due. And a lot of recommendations that come out of the comp plan, we use to update our zoning ordinance. So I might go hand in hand with the updates you're talking now of the solar farms as well.
Thank you, Mitch.
So the Indiana legis, this is on, on battery storage facilities. If you remember, the commission, we went forward with the solar, but we're going to kind of hold off on the battery because we're talking to Mr. Pressel. And he was talking about the state legislature possibly taking action. We didn't want to create rules that, that conflicted with the state rules. So the state legislature has empowered, I don't have it with me. I think it's the Department of Homeland Security, a department within the state of Indiana to create rules for inspection, construction and specifications for these battery facilities. As you know, we want, we have one in La Porte County that's been approved, but with a bunch of conditions. Okay, but as soon as this agency gets their rules and regs in place, I don't think it's going to be I don't think, I think La Porte County is fine to rely on the state set of rules rather than create our own. Okay. But I, I don't think they're done drafting the rules yet.
Did I read a draft in which whatever they pass supersedes our local authority?
I think it would anyway.
Take jurisdiction away from us?
Yeah, it's just so you know, it's kind of out of our hands and in the hands of the state now, which is fine because it's a very technical inspection process. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business?
Obviously, we don't want to discuss strategy in a public meeting, but we should get whatever, whatever information that would be lacking or set up a executive session to deal with the
I guess required, I'd make a motion to give our attorney to motion to dismiss without consulting with anybody. We always want a motion to dismiss. That's standard. I don't think it's anything we have to discuss. We can put in writing, we're granting an authority to do that without consideration.
If, if that's your motion to direct you to dismiss, then I would
Give our attorney a written policy that this board authorizes him to motion to dismiss in any case filed against the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Let's do that. All right. Any other new business this evening?
Madam President, we were going to bring up the lawsuit under new business. And just to clarify, I received notice of that. I could have notified the, the Plan Commission. I got ahold of the attorney right away. He was aware of it. He said, I'll take care of it. We'll discuss it at the meeting and go from there. And that, and that's how that happened. But listening to the discussion tonight, and I would reiterate, I think this is a good, healthy discussion. It's taking place in a public forum. It's transparent. This is what we want to see, especially on, on hot button issues, but just let you know how that worked out with the lawsuit. I'll make sure that the Plan Commission is notified of anything like that.
Problem, and I'm not, hindsight's always 2020 vision. I respect the job you're doing, but I'm sure I'm not the only one that was asked about it and couldn't answer the question. If people in the public already know about it before any of us know about it, that it looks bad, reflects badly on all of us, I think. Rita said she didn't know about it until tonight. So it just, somebody knew about it three or four weeks ago, was asking questions. I couldn't answer the question.
Think that's a good point and I'm glad we brought it up for a discussion.
Thank you.
Is there ever a case where a motion to dismiss would be not in our best interest?
That's a pretty broad question. If, I mean, if there's a motion that's not in the Plan Commission's best interest, I'm not going to make it. Okay, and so you have along the way motions to dismiss, motions for summary judgment, all of which are available. It just depends on the case. And I think this case is blatantly premature. So, you know, it, it, it's the appropriate motion to make right now.
Right. Thank you. Any other new business? Motion to adjourn?
Somewhere.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all this evening.